I would like to call this meeting to order. The Quincy City Council meet Monday, January 30th, 2023. It is now 6:30 PM. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Andronico.
President.
Counselor Kane.
President.
Counselor Harris.
President.
Counselor Liang.
President.
Counselor Mahoney.
President.
Counselor McCarthy. Counselor Phelan.
President.
President Dubana.
President.
Seven members, you have a quorum.
Seven members, we have a quorum. Please rise if you can, please stand. If we can give a moment of silence, please use it as you wish. Turn to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please read the open meeting law.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged impermissible.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, first item on the agenda.
2023-006, an appropriation for $150,000 for a design and engineering MSBA repair program, Montclair-Wallaston and Parker Elementary School.
I'd like to recognize Counselor Phelan.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to make one correction to the original order. There needs to be an amendment to it with language that comes from the MSPA that was not in the one we got in a packet. So I'd like to make an amendment to that if that was deemed okay with the council.
Okay. Counselor Phelan has put an amendment to the vote. I need a second for this. Second on Counselor Liang, any discussion on this motion?
I'll just read it. I think everyone should have it in front of you. This is basically an item by doing this, this is so they can get to work on it over the summer, and it's going to be reimbursable from the, not the $150,000, but we have to put something up to get the money back, if I'm not mistaken. And basically, you can read, everyone has a copy of it, but I'll read it out loud. It deletes a paragraph and has a paragraph directed that the funds be expended from the FY '23 and '24 city of Quincy budgets, specifically the Department of Public Works' contractual building repair account, and that the same be charged to FY 2024 revenue. So that's basically what I'm offering as the amendment.
Okay, we have a second. Counselor Liang, go right ahead. Counselor Liang, you have the floor.
Counselor Phelan, thank you for explaining that. I wanted to ask one more question for clarification if I could. So just so I understand it, we need to put up the $150,000 to continue the effort of moving forward to get essentially the application through and then get a new school built, which is great. So if the money is coming from right now fiscal year '23 and fiscal year '24 budgets, when we get reimbursed, is this going to go back into the fiscal year '24 budget though, correct? And for accounting, so how does that work with accounting with fiscal year '23? We just then have that just spend down the account as it is?
I would defer to the auditor at this point. Would you?
Recognize Counsel Auditor.
If this is going to be a reimbursement from the MSBA, I'm thinking that what will happen is the funds will go in this year to the contractual line that's listed on this order. And then what will happen is as it gets expended, then the department will have to apply for reimbursements, and that will come in as a revenue. I'm not sure if that will come in as a general fund revenue or if it will go right back into that line.
Okay. I mean, either way, the bottom line is we are getting the money back, which is great, but I just wanted to just clarify process. So, thank you, appreciate it.
Yes. Counselor Mahoney, you have the floor.
And just to follow up on what Counselor Liang was asking, and I understand what you said, but have we done this before? Because usually when we're doing feasibility studies for bonding, it's only $150,000. I realize it's not a large amount of money, but I'm just asking, is that, Mr. Heinz, if you could maybe expand on that?
Thank you all for having me this evening. I just want to clarify, just for the record, there are two MSBA processes going simultaneously right now, the core program, which is the Squonham Elementary School, and the accelerated repair program, which is roofs at Wallaston School, Montclair School, and Boiler Room at the Parker Elementary School. This appropriation pertains to the accelerated repair program, the two roofs and the boilers. With the accelerated repair program, the MSBA has a selected list of owners, project managers, and designers. Once this funding is approved by the council, assuming it is, the MSBA will then assign us an architect and an owner's project manager. And the process will begin of the exploration of the existing roofs, the existing boilers, they'll do the surveys. So this is really the seed money to get us to the next step with the MSBA process in the accelerated repair program. So yes, it is part of the reimbursement. When we do fully get into the accelerated repair program, we do a project funding agreement with the MSBA, this would be wrapped up into that entire package.
So to clarify that, then, so we put the seed money up front in 2023, we may be reimbursed when it gets accepted, or potentially it might go into 2024 when we get reimbursed?
Correct. Whatever time, my understanding, and I'm not an accountant, I only tend to play one, it will go to the general fund at the time.
Okay. And then I guess just to follow up on this, is this something, I mean, I believe I took a look at the ARPA funds and we did do some design and feasibilities for other things like the marina that the city purchased, they were doing some feasibility designs to figure out what the access would be. Is there, because we're using your contractual line item, is, could the money come from any other location? Could we use ARPA funds to do this?
I don't know that it could be ARPA funds. I don't know all of the qualifications in ARPA, so I couldn't speak to that intelligently.
Of course, you know, I'm going to support this because it's for the schools, but I think this is just another example, it can be used for the ARPA funds. If we're using ARPA funds for feasibility studies for a marina that none of us voted on, to find out whether or not good access is being used, this is just another example of where we could be saving the taxpayers' money, should we use ARPA funds for the right appropriations for these things? It certainly isn't something that I'm going to say no, because it's something for our school buildings, and it's appropriate use to be able to do that for this, and we're going to be getting reimbursed for it. But either way, would be reimbursed for it, whether it would be through ARPA, we would be extending that money into the general fund. It would have probably been a smarter way to go, but thank you very much.
You're okay? Any other counselors? So we have amendment on the floor. We're going to vote on the amendment first. We have a motion made by Counsel Phelan, seconded by Counsel Liang. Madam Clerk, please call the roll on the amendment.
Counselor Andronico.
Yes.
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counselor Phelan.
Yes.
President Dubana.
Yes.
Seven members.
Seven members in the affirmative. Motion carries. We're going to go on the regular motion here. Counsel Phelan?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Counsel Phelan as amended. Do we have a second? Seconded by Counsel Harris. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Andronico.
Yes.
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counselor Phelan.
Yes.
President Dubana.
Yes.
Seven members.
Seven members in the affirmative. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk. Thank you.
Number two, 2023-007, an order, creation of municipal broadband enterprise fund.
I'd like to recognize Counsel Kane.
Thank you, Ms. President. Please move this to Finance Committee. This is the next step in a series of five years that we've spent working on this project to move this municipal broadband system forward. I appreciate my colleague's support on this movement as we, really, this is a resident-driven initiative, and it continues to be. I know that this is the number one issue that I continue to hear from residents of the city, so we're moving it along as fast as possible, but we'll have a robust discussion about this establishment when we have our next Finance Committee meeting.
So motion made by Counsel Kane to move it into Finance. Do we have a second? Seconded by Counsel Liang. Any discussion on this motion? Counsel Liang.
Just want to quickly commend and thank my colleague for not only leading this initiative, but being so proactive in making sure that it stays a priority on top of everything else that is important that we're working on up here. I know Comcast recently jacked up their prices, and again, this is another example of how we're just at their mercy. And so again, I cannot thank you enough as somebody who has to use their hotspots sometimes at home and has to then pay the fees no matter what they are. I just, as a resident and a colleague, really just thank you for your hard work on this, so.
Thank you, Counsel Liang. Counselor Kane, I also echo the sentiments of continuing this process of five years. This enterprise fund is the next step into the right direction. I appreciate all your patience on this, as the constituents out there are waiting patiently as well. So with that, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Andronico.
Yes.
Counselor Kane.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Eyes have it. Goes into Finance, my fault. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Number three, 2023-008, a resolved community liaison position.
All right, I'd like to recognize Counsel Mahoney.
So I'm just, I'm bringing this resolve forward because it's been noted in the, in various outlets that we're having a hard time finding somebody to come in to do the community liaison position for the Equity and Inclusion Commission. So we're looking for an update, we're really looking for an update, and not just that, we only have one applicant, because quite honestly, there was a, there was a team established by the mayor, nine people, for an Equity and Inclusion Commission that did a study. It was reported in the Patriot Ledger that there was, there was some goals and recommendations for that. You know, there might be a situation where we have to go back and look at those goals and recommendations and maybe take a look at that job description to see whether or not it's the job description that we're having a hard time placing it, is it the salary that we're having a hard time placing it, or is it that we're really not trying to place it at all? It's a real job that we really want to place. What I don't want to see happen is this money go into free cash next year, because it is a position, it's an important position, and we have had multiple issues in the city that have happened that would have been beneficial if we had somebody that would be able to come up and speak to the community about that. So this is a, this is another cause that Counsel Kane led, and I appreciate what was done, and I think for transparency, what we would like to see is maybe report back to this committee of the report that was mentioned in the Patriot Ledger, and have a complete understanding of what's happening and what the obstacles are for us to be able to find the right person for that. I'd like to put this into Finance, into Oversight, or actually have a report, maybe even have it reported the next, next meeting on the agenda. Yep.
So you want Passage, you want to put it into Finance and what other committee?
Oversight.
Oversight. Oversight, Finance, and Passage. Motion made by Counsel Mahoney, do we have a second? Seconded by Counsel Liang. Any other discussion on this motion? Counsel Liang.
I just want to say, I'm grateful for Counsel Mahoney to request this update this evening. You know, I've had the opportunity of talking to a lot of folks about this initiative, sort of what led up to it, writing it, and then connecting with the folks who were on the committee to study it after the fact. And I just want to acknowledge that, you know, I think in this world these days when we talk about DEI and justice and equity, a lot of it does come across as just performative, right? And, you know, I think the intention behind this is for it to be impactful and be real when it comes to making actual change, and not just be a performative thing that we can check the box and say that we did this. And so I first and foremost want to say that, again, I appreciate requesting the update because it is something that I am also eager to see, along with some residents who reached out on it. But I also appreciate that there is a lot of care and intention going into making sure that this is executed in such a way that it's not just performative. And so I think both things are true in this case, and I'm excited to find out about an update and how we can move forward. So, thank you.
Counsel Kane, you have the floor.
Thank you, Ms. President. Yeah, so as Counsel Mahoney alluded to, you know, the mayor pointed me to this commission to lead it as the chair, and we had a series of very frank and open discussions with my diligent colleagues on that commission. And, you know, it took so much time to first diffuse what are the more performative aspects of this subject matter, and even to the point, I mean, I wouldn't want this job. I think this job is kind of, it's not, I don't know if it'll ever be set up to be successful because the anticipation of what the job would seek to perform from, some of my colleagues with no disrespect meant, I think is unrealistic at times. And so I think even in this resolution where, you know, we're talking about this position handling a situation in a school system about potential racism, and this position is never going to cure racism in Quincy or anywhere, and never would this type of position do that. That's just not realistic and/or feasible. And so I also know that there is a person in the school system that's sort of tasked with managing or looking into aspects of this, and so I'd love to know, you know, what they're up to, especially vis a vis this recent incident in the school system. So, I don't know, that's just the way I feel about it. I think the work is difficult, and I don't think that this is going to be a panacea to get, you know, anyone to a place where they feel like certain aspects of prejudice and discrimination are eradicated, because that's just, that's not going to happen through this position at all.
Thank you. Okay, Counsel Kane, any other discussion on this motion? Okay, we got a, Counsel Mahoney, and then Counsel Liang on the second. We're going to put this into Finance, Oversight, and Passage, so we're going to get a roll call on this. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Andronico.
Yes.
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counselor Phelan.
Yes.
President Dubana.
Yes.
Seven members.
Seven members in the affirmative. Motion carries. That completes our items on the agenda for tonight. We're going into the approval of previous meeting minutes, which is January 9th, 2023. Motion to approve made by Counsel Kane, seconded by Counsel Phelan. All those in favor, say aye. Oppose? The ayes have it. That is a vote. Communication reports from the mayor, other city officers, and city boards. Madam Clerk, you have any utilities?
Yes, I do. To refer to Public Works Committee for scheduling and advertising, grant a location National Grid Gas, Willard Street Furnace Ave., and Rashudi Drive, grant of location National Grid Gas, Centus Street, and Garfield Street, and a grant of location from Comcast for 147 C Ave.
Okay. Thank you. Any other communications, reports from the mayor, other city officers, any city boards? Counselors? Unfinished business and proceeding meeting? Okay, moving on, reports of committees. Counselors? Presentation of petitions, memorials, and remonstrance. Counsel Kane, I mean, Counsel Liang.
[laughing].
You're appointing, you're appointing a Counsel Kane.
Usually it's the other, like, usually it's you, you that get mixed up, but sure, we'll go with it. I just want to, I have two things. First and foremost, I just want to wish everybody a Happy New Year. The Lunar New Year was last Sunday, and I want to thank my colleagues for making the adjustment for that Monday so that we could celebrate and that I could celebrate with my family. And so, yeah, I hope everybody that was able to celebrate had a great time, and for those who didn't, Happy New Year. On Sunday, we're going to be celebrating as a city over at North Quincy High School for our annual Lunar New Year Festival. It's going to be great, and we will have a surprise sort of, I guess, unveiling that happens there by our very own Counsel Harris, who, this goes into my second point, actually officially, finally retired on Friday. And so congratulations to you. On Sunday will be your last, you said, official sort of thing that you're going to be doing for all of us. And so for those who are interested in either celebrating the New Year or celebrating our colleague on Sunday, or for both, I encourage you to come to North Quincy High School and do so. Congrats, and Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, Happy Lunar New Year. Anybody else? Any other counselors?
It's a heavy heart to talk about this forward. Thomas Bowes of Quincy passed away peacefully here on Thursday, January 26th, a couple days ago. Tom was born on, born in Boston on July 4th of 1950. He was the son of the late Douglas and Anna Carey Bowes. Tom's career was with the Massachusetts Bay Transportation Authority as a bus operator for 35 years, and Tom spent the end of his career working out at the Quincy area and proudly serving as a union representative for nine years. Tom was a dedicated husband and father, worked diligently to provide for his family. You know, Tom loved work, watching the Boston Bruins, traveling to the main coasts, and walking on Castle Island and Reden. He was the younger, he was the younger, Tom was a member of the 2259 Greater Quincy Knights of Columbus, as well as the Quincy City Club. Faith, family, and friends were very important to Tom. There wasn't anything you wouldn't do for his family cared about. Tom's generosity, selfishness, and example are part of his legacy that will continue through his family. He will be missed all the times that, all the lives that he touched. Tom was the beloved husband of Linda Coke Bowes. The two shared 47 years of marriage. He was a devoted father of Thomas Bowes Jr., which is part of the Quincy Fire Department, as all of us know very well, and his partner Kristen, Kristen Bowes of the Quincy Police Department, and her spouse Melanie. Tom was a loving grandfather of Ryerson and Callahan. He was a dear brother of Donald Bowes and his wife Elizabeth, the late Douglas Bowes Jr. and his late wife Nancy, and the late Robert Bowes and his late wife Jean. He was a dear brother-in-law of Richard Coke and his wife Nancy, Susan Larson and her husband Glenn, Deborah Eaton and her husband William, and also the mayor, the Honorable Thomas P. Coke and his wife Christine, Simeon Leary, Simone Leary and her husband Ed, and the late Joseph Coke and his surviving wife Lynn. Tom is also survived by many loving nieces, nephews, extended family, and friends. If you can make it, it'll be this Friday for the wake over at the Cohane Funeral Home from 4:00 to 7:00, Friday, February 3rd, and the funeral will be the next day on Saturday, February 4th, and it will be at the Sacred Heart Church, and then it will also be, the burial will be at the Mount Wallaston Cemetery right after. Please keep the Bowes family in your thoughts and prayers, and my condolences go out to the entire family involved. Any of the counselors have anything else? Moving on to motions, orders, and resolutions.
I'd like to recognize Counsel Mahoney.
So I know I'm going to, I'm going to introduce another resolution, and it's going to sit on the table until the next meeting, but I think it's important that we, we actually have this, and I was told that I have to read the whole thing, and so I apologize, so I will have to read the whole thing. And so this resolution says, whereas the city of Quincy is transforming its downtown, and whereas finding the sources for, sources for said downtown transformation included taxpayers' money, and whereas a majority of a vote was taken by the city council, passed by Order 22059, authorizing the administration to borrow up to $53 million under General Ledger C40Q, and whereas the city of Quincy purchased 6.610 McGrath Highway on December 28th, 2022 by wire transfer to be used for Alcoholics Anonymous AA meetings, and whereas the mayor has stated in multiple occasions that the purchase, the remaining, that the purchase was done with the remaining American Rescue Plan or ARPA funds, yet it appears that the district improvement financing funds, District 4, the $53 million, is the actual funding source, and whereas yet another commercial property is being taken off the tax roll without the proper discussions from this city council or any procedural votes, and whereas care should be taken in to avoid creating new programs that might require financial commitments by the city of Quincy's taxpayers, and whereas other public assistance groups who have experienced similar meeting space issues during the pandemic are not being included in the supported in this purchase of this building. Therefore, be it resolved that the city, the city Quincy council requests an update by the administration for the purchase of 610 McGrath Highway, including a request for any funding used for the DIF4 and/or ARPA fundings, as well as priorities taken to date with the ARPA funds. Now, this is going to be something that sits until next meeting, and I'd like to ask my colleagues if they'd like to join onto this resolve. And the reason why I brought it forward was because there's nothing more frustrating than to say every meeting, you know, can we have, you know, meetings brought forward, and when we read in the newspaper that, you know, the administration is more than willing to come forward and talk to us about ARPA funds, yet they don't. Yet we have to read in the publications that these things are happening? It's not correct. And I want to just say, coming from a family that has alcoholics in it, anonymous means something for a reason. To buy a building and to put a spotlight on a building for Alcoholics Anonymous is really offensive, and, you know, and when there are so many other places that people need to go, but to put a public building there and say that, that we're doing something to be good for the community. Now, I would say this again, it's a noble thing to say when you're trying to solve people's problems, but this is supposed to be anonymous, and there are other things that are happening in the city that we need to take priorities on. And finally, we voted as a committee for this DIF funding, and this was not listed as one of the properties that we were going to purchase, but the way we write bonds in the city of Quincy are very open-ended, so there are loopholes for the way that money, the taxpayers' money gets spent. I did not support the bond, and I won't support anymore until we actually start itemizing and seeing the buildings that we are purchasing in the city of Quincy, because we cannot afford anymore. So that is my resolve. I hope to put it in Finance, into Oversight, and I ask respectfully that this does not go into a book and sit there forever, but that we actually have people before us to discuss it, because there is a job we're supposed to be doing here, and one of them is being able to approve the purchases of those buildings. It's part of our requirement as a city council. Thank you very much.
So you'd like to, you make a motion to approval and Finance and Oversight? No? Has to go, has to go in committee? Oh, you cannot go in the passage, has to go in committee, that's right. So do you want, do you want a vote tonight?
No.
No? Okay, so you want to have it go into Finance and Oversight? Okay.
It must be placed on the next agenda.
Next agenda. So why did you wait? Okay, never mind.
I wanted to bring it up tonight so that it will sit on the next agenda. I realized we can't vote on it tonight, but that's.
Okay.
The resolve forward tonight, it's timely.
All right, okay.
I couldn't wait. I couldn't get in before the meeting.
Okay. Understandable. Okay. Any other counselors? Scheduling committee meetings and public hearings. Counselors? Counsel Mahoney?
But I want to ask, 22, 2022-131, the order for, home petition for Corey Hill's extension, I want to ask a friendly request that at the next meeting that we have, that there will be public commentary added to that meeting, because many people feel that they want to be able to come up and speak still on that, and I know we had one meeting, but the, the idea is that this is going to come in and that we're going to be having our final discussions, and I want to make sure that the public has an opportunity to speak. And then I'd also like to bring forward and ask, and this is in Finance, and I think it's also in, I think it's also in Oversight. 2022-29, this is Ward 2, Counsel Andronico's motion to resolve for the American Rescue Plan spending transparency. We don't have any more American Rescue money, it's been all encumbered, so I think at this point, for the $46 million that the city has spent, we should be timely in asking for that at the next meeting as well, so that if we could get that be scheduled and brought out. It was reported in the Quincy Sun, I believe, that they're ready to come anytime, they just have to get their arms around it. It's not hard, we, it's all spent. And then also, 2022-8-84, Counsel at Large, Mahoney and Andronico also asked for a resolve seeking the update of the recent land purchases through those special accounts, because we're collecting rents on those buildings as well, and it's important that we know what's happening in the buildings that we purchased that we didn't approve. I mean, I think every meeting we've been asking people to bring things forward, these are important things that we need to discuss, and we don't, we just, we can't let it sit any longer, so I'm asking for those things to come forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Mahoney. Just a little bit to elaborate on the 99-year lease, which is now into Oversight, I mean, into ordinance committee. As taking presidency, and this goes back a long time, as being a council member as well, once it goes into that particular committee, it's up to the chair, and I've always allowed the chair to move on it. So it's in, it's in ordinance committee, and it's up to Counsel McCarthy when he wants to bring that out, as well as Counsel Phelan when he wants to bring out these finance committees, in particular, in the agenda items. This goes back in a long history of us council members being up here some years ago, where other chairs were in those positions where I allowed the chair to make that decision, so I will continue to do that as well, so just to let you know, and to let the public know, I've gotten a lot of emails about not having any representation from Ward 4, and it's already into the Oversight, the ordinance committee, so it's going to be the ordinance chair to make that decision on that. It's not going to go backwards. We've already put it in that committee.
Yes, go right ahead.
I'm just asking for a request for the chairs to take them out. I'm not asking to take them out, I'm asking for a request to the chairs to take them out, for the importance of those discussions. They sat in, they're sitting in here, and we're, I'm asking for those to be taken out. And now, if the chairs do not want to take them out, that's up to the chairs, but the public has a right to know these things, and we have a need to know. And I believe that these are things that everybody here in this council should want to know. Thank you.
And you want public input on the?
I want, I'm requesting a friendly, a friendly request to the chair of ordinance. I believe that's really, it's not really an ordinance, but it should have been Oversight, but, but because it's an, it's an ordinance, I'm asking a friendly request to the chair. People are asking for more public opportunities to be able to speak, especially if there's going to be any push to vote for something, and I'm not saying there is, I'm just saying that it was, it's something that we need to actually make sure we have opportunities for the public to speak. It's a 99-year lease. Thank you.
I agree with Counsel Mahoney on that, and we'll, when the chair gets back, he should be back at next meeting, we can talk, and that's clerk of committees as well. Any other scheduling committee meetings and public hearings? Any of the counselors?
Okay, so Monday, February 13th, we'll be convening here at 6:30 PM, and then we also have one on Monday, February 27th, which is two weeks from now. Those are two of February meetings. With that, is the end of our.